All right, I'd like to call to order the monthly meeting of the Yvonne Board of Education at 7:01. If everyone would rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I always like to start reading the mission statement so it gets our minds in place for what our work is that we're doing here tonight. Our mission is to inspire in each student of joy and passion for learning and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility, which is always a perfect segue, I think, into our Yvonne Achievers. I'm going to call Mr. Jeanine Ford and Mrs. Boreo if you'd like to come forward. I'm going to have Jeff Fleischman join them so we can recognize our Yvonne Achiever.
So we are recognizing Yvonne who are going tonight. It first occurred to me to add Yvonne to our list of Yvonne Achievers in the spring when she showed up for the Spring Concert. And as we sat there in concert, I said, "Oh, my goodness, who are you? I didn't know you had somebody here. Who do you have?" And she said, "All my kids." So I was very impressed. And also, you know, that's just kind of the typically iceberg. Yvonne will dress up for Halloween, so be sure to come out to bus 15 on Halloween. She dresses up to the ends. I mean, she's just amazing. She has flashcards on her, on the ceiling of the bus, and the kids make pictures and she puts them up on the bus. So, Yvonne, for everything you do to make the bus ride more than a bus ride and for all the ways that you care for our children, we thank you and we present this to you.
I'm a mom. It just comes natural.
Yvonne, you're a little nervous.
Yeah. I went to high school.
Well, we do, part of the reason everyone turns out is because you're always on time.
I know. My son is the one that said, "Mom, did you read the letter?" It said, "High school." Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Through the chair. Thank you, Yvonne, for being here. If you don't mind, since we had so many people come out, I think it's only the right thing to do. If we could get a picture of you with all of your kids, as you call them, that are here, would you mind? And parents, would you mind allowing them to step up and take a picture with Miss Yvonne? Just come on up.
Come on up in the well.
Do it here.
Fresh open space. That's right.
Okay. Gabby, you're here too.
Mr. Jean is here.
And Mike Lucas. Jane.
Someone direct the stand.
Do we have to squish in?
Uh, just a little bit closer.
A little bit closer. Gabby, you're here too. Mom. Cheese. Great. I can't believe you guys are all here. Oh, my God.
Thank you all for coming.
So before everyone steps out, I'd like to just acknowledge Ms. Yvonne myself. This is quite a testament to have this many students show up to a board event meeting. Thank you for being so enthusiastic and showing up. I know for me, one of the things I try to teach my own children, and I've mentioned it numerous times, the way that you make a person feel is so much more important than necessarily who you are. So that Yvonne has had this kind of impact on all of these children as well as their parents. Her kindness is just perpetuated on through them and the generations to come. So we are very fortunate to have Yvonne and working with all of our kids because she's a legacy in the making. So thank you very much, everyone, for coming out and celebrating with her. We're grateful to have her and we know that so many of you have come for this reason. So we always will graciously allow you to step out if this was your purpose tonight. We won't take offense. We appreciate you coming. Thank you so much for joining us. And congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, now moving along. Can I have a motion to approve the Board of Education's regular monthly meeting minutes from September 17?
So moved.
Houston moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jackie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ananas?
Yes.
Okay, so now we move on to communication from the public. Oh, I think Ms. Yvonne forgot her certificate. Would someone mind grabbing her certificate and her gift? Thank you very much. Is anyone here that would like to speak? Please come forward. Please state your name for the record.
I'm Nicole C-H-E-H-U-I and Lewis L-E-I-B-Y-S. And I'm here in my class. I'm actually not as apparent. I'm here in my class as an expert. I'm a board-certified forensic psychiatry psychiatrist. I testified regarding rape trauma syndrome and post-traumatic stress, as well as bullying and issues of school substance abuse safety. I've studied suicidality, aggression, and risk assessment. And my reputation is at least national, if not international, and professor emeritus. And I continue to provide clinical treatments, seeing 40 patients a week, of which 25 have PTSD. The last time I talked to someone who was suicidal with PTSD was this morning. That's a routine part of my practice. I do that most days. I've had the pleasure of working with World War I survivors up to victims of Somalia and survivors of the concentration camps as well. I've run a group on post-traumatic stress and rape, and I provide therapy, in pharmacotherapy in that capacity. I attempted to discuss with the curriculum committee a book that was assigned to the school without appropriate curricular approval. As you know, books need to be able to document that they've been vetted and approved. This book was not posted on the curricular website. And this book involves rape, date rape of a young girl. The book is, the author herself says that its primary value is to provide a rape trauma narrative that borders on psychosis, and I concur. The book is not without value. My concerns today, and I'm going to try to keep them brief in the interest of time, I brought my concerns directly out of respect to you, the curriculum committee. I wanted it to remain private because you have violated numerous policies and it's gross and abhorrent. I did not hear, I heard from Ms. Rusek the Friday after that meeting, and I awaited her response to me, and I got it this afternoon. Ms. Rusek was unaware that without approval, the school had gone ahead with this book. She tried to get me to say the book should be banned. I absolutely, I am for academic freedom. I don't even care if you have pornography, if people give permission for children to view it, right? Parents, feel free to teach whatever you want. American Psycho, whatever you want to teach with parental approval. But where you have profane or questionable things, you always need to inform parents. You went ahead and showed this movie without parental approval, just as you showed last year One Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest, rated R, without parental approval. This is a frank violation of policy. I'm not saying it has no place. What I am saying is for a young woman, I don't have girls, but for a young woman who is actually raped, being forced to watch a date rape in a public classroom, and then your discourse afterwards is frankly dangerous. You could induce suicide with that behavior. In this packet, I've gone through all the policies that have been violated. I won't belabor it today. Suffice to say that I think your behavior is frankly dangerous. I've run many things as an administrator. I have ultimately accountability. The accountability flows upward. So I'm not interested in attacking teachers and I'm not interested in attacking principals. The responsibility rests squarely with the Board of Education, the Curriculum Committee, and the Superintendent. That's your responsibility. Your first responsibility is to keep children safe. The next concern I have is by showing this material, you make education less accessible, not more accessible. If you have gifted students that want to read this, by all means, let them. I have no problem with that. But for the bell-shaped curve, this is likely not appropriate. Finally, I'd point out that you recommended The Kite Runner for incoming ninth graders. The Kite Runner has graphic scenes of homicide and anal rape. My child didn't read it. He's not developmentally ready. But most people would agree, if you read The Kite Runner in ninth grade and you're not upset by it, either you're a psychopath or you're not ready to read the book. It's a very good book, but it's very graphic. It's inappropriate for a ninth grader. So I'm left, and you planned to read Thug Life, which as we know stands for the hate you give little infants, pardon the profanity. But Thug Life has more than 400 examples of profanity in the book. And I worked with gang members. I actually worked with gang members. I showed them this book, and their response was, "We don't raise our children to speak that way." Okay, so what I am saying to you is, what I'm asking you to do is, A, you say that we get timely notice of curriculum, and the curriculum you have posted lists as neither of that book is book. So I'm left with the inarguable conclusion that you willfully concealed that, and that is a problem for me. Two, that if you're showing a movie, give notification. Three, if you have alternative instruction, there should be no discrimination against people who opt out. I'm aware of people who were harassed last year who opted out of One Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest. Not my kids. They saw it, didn't really care. But when you make mainstream date rape, profanity, drinking, and you force people to opt out of that, who are then mocked, that's just not working for me. A better forum for if you want, if you ever wanted us to do a presentation on date rape, PTSD, there are experts who are more than willing to do that. It's not, I don't think the book is without value, just not for mainstream English class. Finally, it's portrayed as young adult fiction. My son, who read it, correctly identifies, "This is written by an old lady. The language isn't current." She's my age. She wrote this book in 1999. That's not current young adult fiction. You know, so if we're trying to say it's timely and cutting edge, it's like not even that. And the last thing I'd say that I said, it concerns me a bit that the curriculum committee didn't bring these concerns to you. I don't know if they did. But finally, it concerns me that in that book, in the back, it advises children, "If your friend tells you they're raped, keep it secret. Don't tell anyone." And that's just dangerous advice. And so I encourage you to read the appendix of the book that you gave to our children and the advice it gives. I'm not objecting to the book. You can have whatever book you want in your library. Please, following federal law, have it for the bell-shaped curve of kids. You want more advanced reading? Fantastic. You want special reading? Fantastic. But the bell shape, we don't need 400 F-bombs. We don't need movies showing date rape. Thank you very much for your time. If you have questions, please feel free to contact me. Again, I think this increases your risk of school, like death by completed suicide. I think it increases risk. I'm sure many kids can handle it. For the one that doesn't, that's generations of an empty seat at their table. Generations of that. I stood here and testified when you cut social workers to the school, and I am equally passionate about this issue. For those of you who heard me speak about social workers, you know how passionate I get. I want to keep children safe. I am confident many children can handle that, but I want to keep as many children safe as possible. Thank you.
Let me just interrupt for a few seconds. What was the name of the book for you in particular?
There are two. One is Speak by Laurie Anderson. Speak, it's a book that is the me-too narrative, and I'd encourage you to read the appendix. It says among other things that rape, people who report rape are always to be believed. I showed that to a prosecutor. We know that's not true. They're always to be heard. And it recommends that if someone tells you they're raped, you should keep it secret till they give you permission. And we know with children, that's against the law, right? So Speak is the other one book, and Thug Life, the hate you would give little infants, everyone. That, Thug Life, it's a tattoo. It's a gang tat. And that is from the elegiac writing of Tupac Shakur, who writes way better than the author. And I'd be more than happy to provide the writing of Tupac's writing that are better than this. But this is a pay-end Black Lives Matter. And my best friend, who's an attorney general, who's African-American, was pretty offended by the portrayal of her race in that book. It's critically acclaimed, but again, replete with profanity. Fine if kids read it, but I would say that, and especially if they show that movie, that's concerning too. But that's basically a, so those two things.
So it's three books, The Kite Runner.
Oh, The Kite Runner was recommended by my 13-year-old boy. It's a great book, but it is graphic.
Okay, and what's the name of the movie?
The Kite Runner. I don't know if they're, I have no knowledge if they are showing that. But it depicts anal rape, shooting someone in the face, various severe abuse. It is a great book, as is The Painted Bird, which was so traumatic that critics got up and walked out of it. So I told the curriculum committee when I met with them, "If you want me to meet with you, I could do a capstone, like I could provide you with literature if you wanted a whole project on like the rape narrative for an advanced student." These books would be superb for that, more collegiate level. But for the average and, you know, for just the non-honor student, these just aren't helpful.
I'm just trying to make sure that I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, I don't think The Kite, The Kite Runner is just not appropriate for a ninth grader. It's a great book. Speak is a great book used in a different way, not as literature, but looked at as a trauma narrative, just as The Painted Bird, those are useful there. And Thug Life is sort of neither here nor there. It leaves me sort of, man, Tupac's writing is better than Thug Life.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and make a comment? Okay, come forward and tell us your name.
Hello, everyone. My name is Carolyn Holt. I'm a junior at Yvonne High School. And I want, I'm going to try to keep my statement brief. Okay, it's very close enough. I talked earlier that you guys can't really say much about it. But since Dr. Conmola knows about this. But as of May of 2019, I've been working with Dr. Conmola and Mr. Connolly, his security, to implement a door barricade system called the Teacher Lock that would be attached to each classroom door that can be used in the event of an active shooting or any active shooting event. It's basically used for a life resort. Because, you know, there are schools, we have a ton of renovation, not renovation, but we have a ton of procedures in place to prevent someone from coming in the building. But then once they're in the building, they have that one lock, and that's it. So the Teacher Lock is an additional mechanism to prevent someone in. And right now, we are actually testing, not testing, but the Yvonne Police Department and, and Task Force. Sometime this month, they'll be testing it, passing it. And I'm assuming they're passing it. But after that, then the financial part of paying for it. And my estimate, I got a call from the company, it'll be around a quarter million dollars. And I just kind of want to grow that cost out there and be okay. I think this is something that we should invest in, as is the safety of, you know, everyone here. So I'll use my full attention once, but that's all I can say.
Thank you.
Actually, if you go to Dr. Conmola, maybe she can pass it up at the end of the meeting.
For the recording, Senator.
Thank you, Carolyn. Anyone else who have a comment? Thank you very much. Okay, items of information are student rec reports. So I don't know if Ms. Boreau would like to go first.
Sure.
Might want to bring the mic a little closer to you.
All right, so the past month has been pretty smooth. Some developments at the school include our upcoming pep rally, as well as the pep rallies bonfire, which are both occurring on the 18th. And this year is the first time we're actually hosting a proper bonfire, so that's pretty nice. As well as this year's pep rally is more student-oriented, and because we have a new student government advisor, a lot more student involvement has been, as we present this year. In addition, the sports, the fall sports seasons are winding down to an end.
Kind of to add to that, I just wanted to say that I personally noticed a huge addition in school spirit and student involvement this year, more so than ever. Students are really taking the events of the school into their own hands, where as in past years, I don't think that they dug so as much. And so I've been really proud of the student body for doing that. So right now, we're doing the blood drive, and we give some blood to Yvonne for Yvonne Hub. And I'm in both student government and Yvonne Hub, which runs those lives. And the students have completely run the blood cells, and it's good. So we'll be proud of the student body this year.
Excellent. Addison, thank you for sharing that perspective. But a lot of times we hear, the information doesn't always get out there that students are working so hard to put energy behind these events. So we're thrilled that this, which is encouraging that, and that you're taking to it as well. Did anybody have any questions for the students? Okay, thank you. Financial report, Ms. Shaw.
So you've noticed in your financial report the largest changes from the month of August, where it now shoots towards $4500. And that's because the purchase orders for our tuition and transportation were shored up. We either received an invoice or we received the estimated official costs for those out of district placements and the transportation costs. So really not too much to report, but there was $672,000 in unincumbent balance change from the month prior.
Thank you. Were there any questions for Ms. Shaw? Our committee reports, curriculum and professional practices. Jackie?
Nothing to report. We have our next meeting October 22 at Central Office. I think it's at 5:30. I'll double check the website.
Thank you. Finance, Jay?
So the most important points to talk about from our last meeting are the capital budget and the fees and tuition schedule, and that's all on our agenda, new business. We'll get more detail there. Our next meeting is Tuesday, November 12 at 6:00 p.m.
Or that might be adjusted. Is that right?
We're not certain yet.
Okay. Thank you for that. Thank you. Okay, negotiations. Jason isn't with us this evening, but we don't have anything to report at this time. Policy, Laura.
So in our last meeting, we had a presentation by counsel who came in and talked this about current changes to state statutes and ways to make our policy more updated with respect to data collection and retention of information from the parent. And we also talked about our nondiscrimination policy as it relates to curriculum, which we're going to be talking about tonight for first read. Not sure if Ms. Medick or Superintendent would like to speak to some of the information, Mr. General. It's also going to be in the notes.
Any additional information?
Through the chair, I, thank you. I would add that we had our first read on the nondiscrimination policies for both personnel and students at our previous board meeting. These changes primarily were due to changes in law, but also in our reporting procedures and our forms and regulations that we would use alongside. We made them to mimic very much our sexual harassment and Title IX procedures as they are all interrelated. We wanted the information to be able to be documented in a way that would allow our administrators to follow through on these types of issues and also to maintain records, but also to have a consistent process for similar complaints, whether it be nondiscrimination, sexual harassment. And I think there's another one that we might have through the, we're moving to right now, previous meeting, but definitely the two of those are the same forms. Likewise, the removal of the policy we discussed in our policy committee meeting, that is simply because it is, in some parts, duplicating the nondiscrimination policy that we have brought forward, and in some ways, it's not reflective of the changes that we made. So everything that we need in our nondiscrimination policy is contained in the two that we have tonight for the second read and hopefully approval. And therefore, we are looking to remove the other policy that's not necessary any longer. That's why we are asking for that 0521 to be removed. That language, the necessary language from that policy is contained in the other two policies. Anything that you would add to that, Mr. Medick?
Thank you. Liaison reports, board rep to Curriculum Professional Development Council. The first one of the year is Thursday, so that, we'll have information at the next meeting regarding that. Board of Finance, David?
All right, I was at the head of meeting on September 23. The action item that is of interest to us is the Board of Finance approved our lease purchase agreement for the HP Chromebooks and PCs. So that's the part that's of interest to us. Also, with the Board of Finance, speaking in my personal capacity, not as a board member, because we hadn't had a discussion on this topic, but I made the suggestion that even though we don't see it on the horizon just yet, the state is at some point going to look for a contribution from us from pension systems. And I merely suggested to the Board of Finance, if such a little way to arrive, that they should not just pay it, in that they should coordinate that activity between the Town Council, Board of Finance, and Board of Education to take care as to how that expense is recorded in financial systems so that when it comes time to negotiate a union contract, we'll have that expense on our books to count towards the cost of such a contract.
Thank you, David. Any questions? Next, Yvonne Town Council. Jason isn't able to be with us this evening. He did email me an update. There wasn't much to report at the October 3 Town Council meeting. Several of the members mentioned that they had attended our internship presentation that was in the gallery, and they spoke very highly of it, and what's not to speak highly of? The students are very impressive, so we appreciate when we have Town Council members come out to see the students as well, because they're worth showing off. They do a fabulous job. As far as the October 9 turf field building committee meeting, that was canceled due to a lack of agenda items. However, the final meeting is scheduled for October 30, and the Town Council is expected to turn the field over officially to the Board of Ed after that final meeting. It sounded like there was about $20,000 of contingency money left at the time of the Town Council meeting. So that's all we had to report. So I wish I could answer questions, but that's all I've got. So now moving to Capitol Region Education Council. Jackie?
I have handed in the agenda from the last meeting, and I will be attending the upcoming meeting.
All right, excellent. Thank you. So now Chair's update. I don't have anything other than thinking we're moving along nicely into the school year, so I will just move right over to the Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just to point out a few, in the interest of brevity this evening, because we need to go through the capital budget and our fee schedule also, I just want to speak about a few things. Our hiring report, as you saw, we sent out a notification that we have hired our assistant principal for Yvonne Middle School, Ms. Christina Walls, who is starting with us November 4. We are currently still looking for a replacement of our school psychologist. We signed just today the paperwork to replace the safety and security specialist at Yvonne Middle School. So that process has already been carried out, and that individual will be starting soon. I haven't put the date down yet because I literally just signed all of that paperwork, but we have agreed that. Also, we finalized interviews and hired our assistant director of nutrition services, which is a great help to Maggie and the consortium. So happy to see Evelyn begin with us. Our enrollment report, again, I'll just say, we are exactly the same spot that we were last month this time. On the strategic plan, number one, I ask that if you haven't yet, if board members had the opportunity to do the doodle. to do the, the doodle poll to indicate availability, we're trying to get together to go through the changes to that plan and, um, seek board feedback and finalize that. So I asked that you please do the poll that Ms. Moise sent out. As you know, again, for this time of year, and I, I know how limited the time is between, uh, a number of other meetings we've already committed to and the holidays and a bunch of season coming up, so we tried to do that as soon as possible. Just to be clear, because it was brought out by one of the board members earlier today, no, we were not looking for that to be a half hour of your time, uh, rather it was in half hour increments. I, I would think we would be together in about two hours. Um, so, we were just looking for what start and end times throughout that you might be available. So, next time we'll send it out a little bit different to be more clear about that, but that's, that's why it's in half hour increments. Also, uh, speaking back to the turnover of the field, uh, Mr. Ultimus, Mr. Phylon, and I attended a meeting with Mr. Robertson, uh, Ruth, and Grace on the town side to begin, uh, talking about the turnover of the turf field. As of right now, I believe the date, the tentative date for the, for the official turnover, so to speak, is November seventh. That would happen by the closing out and construction project, substantial completion and closing of the project as a whole on the town council side. We are looking at November ninth, Saturday, November ninth, as a date to have a, a grand opening, so to speak, of the field as a Saturday. More information will come out, there's something being put together to have a short program before a game that is that day. I believe the game is at one o'clock, and, um, we are looking to possibly do something, say around twelve-thirty. So, we have to look out for that, but that's the tentative plan right now. Again, with the time of year that it is, we are limited in the number of athletic events that we could have tacked onto to do a kind of grand opening. By the time you're into November of the fall season, most of the meets, games, or competitions turn to invitationals, whether or not we have made it to state finals and so on. So this is a game that we know we have on the calendar, um, that we might be able to get folks out to. And as you also know, by then it's starting to get dark earlier, and now at least there aren't the lights on the field. So, that is really sad that I can't get to play, and thank, uh, the high school for assisting us with planning this, Mr. Phylon. Send something out about that as soon as we have more. Thank you.
Consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
I would like to remove, uh, item A from the consent calendar, uh, they approved budget transfers, simply because, uh, I know the minutes for the last finance committee have not been submitted yet, so I'm unaware of what the discussion was around those transfers.
Did you want to wait until after we vote, or is that okay? Alright. I would like to acknowledge the donation is incredibly generous of the family, so I appreciate that. Were there any other items that anyone wanted to remove from consent calendar for conversation? Otherwise, Houston, are you willing to still move?
Of course.
Okay, so Houston has moved, um, to pass the consent calendar minus the A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, you were just looking for more information?
That's it, I'm just, I, you know, just want the background of what the transfers were before we just vote on them.
Okay, so Jay?
So actually, this is one month where we did not even discuss the budget transfers because I believe they're all under three thousand dollars or so, so there's nothing of significance that brought our attention to, you know, any communication all in our meeting. And they're all included in the packet, so Karen wants to see them in that.
I just, it would have, it, it's helpful to have the, the minutes, just to know what had been any sort of discussion whatsoever. In my own hindsight, I, I realized we didn't have the minutes last month when we agreed to consent calendar, because September tenth is the minutes that we received in the packet today. And it was actually when I went through it, I realized I would have had questions regarding some of those transfers last month, but we've already voted on in terms of the consent calendar. So I, I just, I, I, it would be helpful, and, and thank you for the explanation that there wasn't a discussion. I just, it'd be helpful to have some of that input in advance.
Alright, so now motion to approve the budget transfers?
May I? May I ask from the chair before we move forward? Mr. Fleischman, now with the, the transfer requests here in the, in the packet. Do you want to, uh, should we speak to some?
Sure.
Some of them?
Sure.
Before we move forward?
Absolutely, thank you.
Just so that we're clear on the public record. I know I can do it, but you can do it better justice, I believe, so, Ms. Shaw?
Um, we'll just go through them one by one, but briefly, because we do have capital structure at this point. Beginning on page eight, uh, transfer number twenty-twenty-fifteen, this, and, let's see, sixteen, uh, seventeen...
I'm, I'm sorry, my transfers begin at page sixteen.
Yeah, can you go now by the number of the transfer, or by the page, Ms. Shaw? That would be easier, thank you. She, she's going by the number on the top.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, let's start again. Okay, number, page sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, um, and nineteen. These are what we like to affectionately call cleanup transfers. This has to do with the shifts and enrollments, some of them are mentioned in here, as well as, uh, additional supplies that are just needed based on, well, I hate to say it, but, you know, live items that may not have arrived live in some instances. That hasn't happened yet this year, but it happened last year. It was quite dramatic, if anybody remembers. Puerto Rico had a lot of shipment. Anyway, then if we continue on, the music equipment, which is on page twenty. This was, actually, they, they purchased the items that they had budgeted for, and they wanted an additional item, which was the Bose, um, sound speaker, or something like that. I believe I have a speaker tube on here, so that's what that is. The flex chair stations, which are on page twenty-one, this is, uh, the charging stations for some of the Chromebooks and the science labs. In fact, they're much more compact and easier. So, those were not budgeted, but they found the money, they're important to them. Page twenty-two, this was not budgeted, but it is a requirement, we have a student that has a need for wheelchair. Page twenty-three, this is a request by the high school guidance department to utilize their funds in a different line. It specifically speaks to, how I understand, assisting students with introductions to colleges. So they wanted the funds in a supply line, so they can purchase supplies or memberships or things of that nature, rather than having it in just this general sort of professional, even memberships line. So, it's a reallocation of their funds. And I guess that's it.
I appreciate the, the quick summary, thank you. Sure, I'm motion to approve the, the budget transfer.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, second by David, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we're on to new business, so policy six-one-two-one, non-discrimination and the instructional program, first read. Who would like to speak to that?
I can speak to that. As we did through our non-discrimination policy for personnel and students at prior meetings, we began to take a look at any other, uh, policies in our other series that are connected to non-discrimination. And, uh, policy six-one-two-one talks about non-discrimination, instructional program. As you can see in your packet, we did have to make some changes because there's, um, language in this policy related to employment as well, so we wanted to clear that out of the policy and have this policy focus on, uh, our instructional program and ensure that it is aligned to the non-discrimination statement in our other policies.
Are there any, are there any questions for Mr. Medic?
One quick one. Changes are all approved and recommended by our council.
Correct, they have all been reviewed by board council and approved.
To be clear, Mr. Fleischman, they mimic, they mimic the changes that were already made in the non-discrimination policy, so we didn't need to put those lingering pieces through and pay the money for them to be reviewed, reviewed again.
Okay, thank you.
And this is a first read, so it'll breathe for a little while and come back to us. Capital budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, are we inviting?
Yes.
Mr. Ultimus forward.
Please.
Miles, it's your time.
Thanks.
Good evening. First, we update the capital improvement and next year's mission. Briefly, last year's, uh, capital improvement update. We've, uh, worked on the, uh, Roaringbrook School roof replacement. We've got an architect to do the design, and we're able to start phase one, and I'll show you some of the phases going later on. We're able to start phase one at the end of this month. Town worked its way through purchasing, so we think we're on track with that. Middle School and High School elevator cylinder replacements, that was a code issue, both of those have been completed. The, uh, high school fire alarm notification system has been completed. There's a new fire alarm system here along with, uh, a number of, uh, it duplicates as a mass notification for lockdown drills and that, 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 depending on too. And this security upgrade, what we were able to complete was, uh, we're in the process of doing the Santana Thompson book that we did here, it's a complete replacement of the system like we did here, but it's an add-on. Replacing some of the speakers, putting in, uh, lockdown buttons, replace the fire panel. That's ongoing now, we'll be hopefully finished this Saturday. And we also have, uh, added the additional side locks to all the interior doors of the entrances to, uh, the high school and Thompson Brook and Roaringbrook. So now the man trap has the, uh, the fob keys on both the inside doors and the outside doors. Oh, the other item that was on the list, it's like, uh, the replacement of the boiler here at the high school. We have a engineer on, um, container hired, but we hired him to do the design. They're doing a flow test, that should be made up there shortly. And he'll go into the research and design phase, come up with a recommendation for us, and hopefully will be in time for us to implement next summer. Moving on to this year's recommendations. These are in, uh, recommended priority, uh, order. And I'll go through each one of these individually. First item is, uh, Roaringbrook School roof replacement. As you can see, it was last replaced in nineteen ninety-four. It's both about phase one. We're, number one on the list is phase two for another two-hundred-and-ten-thousand, followed by phase three. This is mentioned twice, at one time during the, um, financial committee meeting, we thought we had identified a bigger savings by doing both phases at once. Found out in writing, just before the board meeting, the savings wasn't anywhere, wasn't significant at all, but that's why it's listed on there twice. If you do it both together, it saves about five thousand dollars.
Wow, could I just interrupt? Uh, the previous slide and this slide, also a difference between what the slide shows and what our book shows, by about?
Five thousand.
Five thousand dollars. Is there a particular reason that I should pay attention or ignore that?
Uh, the reason is, I just got the latest figure.
But this is more up to date?
This is more up to date. That's, that's actually best. That's the only change on it, though.
Okay.
The other numbers are good, but what's changed is the, uh, number seven.
So, let's be clear, you just said this, but I hope you heard, heard your intention. We were asked at the facility, I was asked at the facility, the finance committee, if there would be a savings if we did phase two and phase three together, if it was worth doing, saving that much. This had been published without that information. Just before we came, you could see earlier today, getting back in writing from the company, the savings. There is savings, it's about five thousand dollars. So we changed it in the slide, so I want to make sure that we brought that number, because it's only that change.
See that, here's the phases. Phase one, it should be extended a little bit further up to the top there, on the brown there. Phase one, if you're familiar with Roaringbrook, it's basically the foyer to the mid, to the gym, the classified gym and the hallway leading up to the main building. That is what we're, uh, on schedule, or hopefully on schedule to do again this month. Phase two is the gym roof proper, followed by phase three, which is the, uh, backside of the, backside of the school. Number two is the entryway pavers at, uh, the middle school. The pavers are being, an issue, I think, since they were put in. We've been replacing them as they break, and as the pictures were out of replacement pavers, they no longer make that design. They're not able to get that design replaced for, for I arrived. And it's become a significant safety hazard. The area we're talking about is there around the circle, the lighter brown area, around the entrance way and going around the bus circle. See that, that's kind of what it looks like now. And it's pretty widespread. So what we want to do is, is tear out the pavement and replace it with a, with a cement concrete side wall, much like the entrance, all the other tools now. Right on the list is the air venting units and the rooftop unit replacements on the HVAC system there at the high school. They, uh, they're twenty-one years old. They have a lifespan of fifteen, we're keeping going, but they, uh, no longer remake the part for it, so we get a part in, we have to modify something to make it fit. And it's the same with the refrigerant, it's an old type of refrigerant, so we have to buy it through the process, which is about two, three times as expensive than new refrigerants. Uh, this would be done in three phases. As you see on there, with phase one, hopefully next year.
Just a brief question, that refrigerant would be Freon, and now would be Freon three?
I cannot answer that. I'd have, I'd have to check.
But that's the primary reason, they don't make the original. They have a number right now, they don't make the original number, Freon.
You can have my Freon.
As is the HVAC summary, as you see, we've done pretty good, we've replaced Roaringbrook, Pine Grove, the middle school over the past few years. High school's next, and once that's done, we'll be ready to do Thompson Brook. Thompson Brook's holding up pretty good, we haven't had any issues with that, so, that's why we want to do the high school next. Uh, some more security money. What we hope to do with this is one, complete the security foyer at the middle school. As you've seen, this past year, we have really just a windscreen, so it's boxing in. That part of it, despite the new entrance door we put in last year, is turning it into a true security foyer. That's on a, a, a security checklist that we get from the state, we have to fill out every year. And then, we're going to try and do the, uh, do the same thing for middle school we've done at the Thompson Brook, and that's up there. and that's upgraded the lockdown buttons. Depending on how... That's how much the lockdown button will cost, but I mean, lock the case to the natural panel. Roaring Brook School, replaced intrusion alarm. It's been there since 1987. They don't make parts for it anymore, which is what we have with a lot of things around here. We get a number of multiple false reports that the wind blows, the heater comes on, and the police get called with a motion defense. It's a program that's... Whenever we have to change the codes, if they get punched in, they need to bring in a dial-up modem to hook up to it in order to reprogram it, because that's... We'll take an analog, a digital program. So it's standard replacement. That's where that... We get that cost of $30,000 from the state council of the whole state furniture. And then, continuing on, the LED lighting. We've been doing this, some with capital, some with operational, for a number of years. If you remember, a few years ago, we did all the Roaring Brook lights. We've started, we've also done all the parking lot lights and all the exterior lights in all the schools. We started moving next to the middle school because the drywall ceilings, the lights were falling out. Because that's the only way to access what's above the ceiling is by going through the lights. So they've been in the number of past 40 years, 40-some years. They've been open and closed a lot. We're wearing out the lights, we're coming off. So we started replacing those. And also, we found out when we started replacing some of the lights in the drop ceilings, that they want to cure properly according to today's code. If they want to cure, so if it were in case of fire, it would actually fall out of the ceiling through our portion of the water. So we've had some additional costs there. As we go through, we place those lights, wire them to the... Every place, and we've had to wire them to the girders supports of the ceiling. Two schools that we... And the other schools were replacing the lights as we get to them, so it's been a gradual thing. But we're trying to do middle school as a full-time project and move on to the other schools. Average electrical savings, since we started that, you see up there. Not all of that, as you couldn't get to the LED lighting, but I think it gives you an idea that the percentage of light switching to LED lights is... We're saving electricity every year. Not to mention, the light bulbs have about a five-year lifespan also. We're not replacing the lights either. So the five-year cost is $160,000, just projecting out the finished middle school and then move on to the other school within that. We've got about 360 lights left to do. Summary, those are the requests in the recommended sequence priority list this year.
I have a question on the... Have you been able to place it? It's all worked out. When we... When we do the...
It's the next summer.
Next summer?
We're doing some favor replacement with the remaining ones we have. We have some other internal fixes to make it safe. They're not going to last very long. But it'll be a summer project.
Any other questions for Miles?
I'll make the motion to approve the fiscal year 2020, 2021 capital budget.
Second, my David Oliver favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one's opposed her saving, correct? Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Miles. Appreciate the summary for us. So next, to move on to the fiscal year 2020, 2021 fees and tuition schedule. Are we asking Maggie Drayer to come forward or Ms. Ashad to?
No, we just said Ms. Drayer was... She was a part of the previous meeting, but... Ashad speak to it and we can answer questions.
They want to leave you out.
All righty. Thank you.
Deb, what page is this on? I had it...
It's on page 53, and then we have information regarding the fees behind that. So, Ms. Ashad, if you want to speak to it and just give a little summary.
This year, we are asking for... For to consider increases in two specific fee areas, though we also did include every fee that the district charges to families in the following page as the fee schedule, so it's page 54, which contains all the fees. The two items that we are asking for consideration this year is, one, would be our preschool tuition. Last year, the board did agree to adjust, and we call it the preschool tuition, because we were going for a full-day program, which we did. Just to give you a little summary, as we did in the finance committee, preschool program has had a wonderful response from the community. There are 56 students enrolled in the program and 50 children on the waiting list, which is quite outstanding. It has seemed to grow year over year. Also, we moved to a multi-age program this year. This is our pilot year, if you will, but again, it's had tremendous positive feedback. The program director, who is Tiffany Fox, provided a lovely little summary, but essentially she wanted to relay the message that the program does go through a comprehensive program evaluation every year, which consists of a survey to parents. Traditionally, she has had, you know, positive feedback on that program. The reason why we are asking for this fee announcement to be reviewed at this point is because in comparison to programs in the area, Avon's tuition for peers is substantially lower by 40%. So we are asking for a phase-in model to get us to what we would consider in three years about market value at that point will still be below because other districts are looking to increase their tuitions year over year. But at this point, it will help to offset the cost of the program. It certainly is never going to be break-even, but it will help offset that cost. That being said, I provided the write-up for what the administration is asking for consideration on that phase-in model for next year, so the rate being $6,957.50. The second portion of requests that we have is for lunch prices. I will make a specific note that it is for lunch only. I have to say that because at the high school level, at the very least, the students have an option for a mini lunch or a boardset lunch, which is a little bit more expensive. We're not asking to raise those prices. We're asking to raise the prices of the lunch-only meals at all buildings by 25 cents for next year. Just so you're aware, the last time the board did agree to raise this particular fee was in 1617. Since then, just to give you an idea, clearly costs have risen, but the largest cost that has impacted this program and clearly all of us sitting at this table is the cost of food in general. The cost year over year from 2018, 19. Food costs rose 14.23% on... That affected this program in particular, and I know that all of us had that same effect. So we are asking for consideration on 25 cents for just lunch prices only for next year.
I have a miss... Oh, sorry. No, it's okay. I just wanted to ask or clarify something I think might be important information. We spoke about this in the finance committee meeting. So, the 14% rise in food costs over the past year, if I remember correctly, is approximately a $40,000 net increase to us in cost for food, correct? And the 25 cents per lunch that we are looking to increase, the... Our projected revenue from that is... That's the number I kept brought up.
Right, to be honest with you, it's not even going to meet that number.
Right, that's why I want to choose... Right, so food alone, $40,000, and the cost ever is... This small change will amount to about $28,000. So, we're not... The program doesn't exist to make money, so to speak, but to be self-sufficient to the extent that we can is what we are looking for, to be able to provide a quality lunch, but to have the program fund itself to the extent that it can, between revenue and the grants that we can get from the federal government.
I have two questions. What is the difference for the preschool? What... You're requesting, what's the difference? I just don't have that paper in front of me.
So if you look at page 56... This is the other thing I want to be able to point out also. In comparing apples to apples, so to speak, if we look at who provides full day, because that's really the only comparison we have, because we are providing only full day at this point. And if you remember, last year, we left the fees in part because we were piloting this new program this year. So we left everything status quo so that we could see how this rolled out. So, our tuition for the current 1920 year is $5,566. If you look, Farmington provides full day, and I know the question you asked, I just want to point this out before. $9,377 is the cost of Farmington for a full day. And in Simsbury, $9,976 is a full day. So we're about $4,000 per year below what two neighboring districts charge for a full day. And the increment, the increase that we are looking for in the coming year, the dollar amount is the number she's looking for. Let's not have this page.
It's $1,391.50.
Which would bring us to the total of?
So it's an increase of about $1,300 per family per year. I guess I appreciate the work that the finance committee did. It sounds like the finance committee is endorsing all of these changes and that they have been debated and discussed, and I appreciate the numbers that you brought. I'm happy to support that. I always feel a little anxiety when we're raising numbers for families. That's a pretty dramatic number for some families, and I... I hope that we're giving plenty of notice ahead of time and that we're working with families that would need some guidance on that. The other question I had was about the lunch. I'm happy to approve that. I understand the fiscal challenges we have with that program. I do, I implore the board that we have some process in place that we're keeping an eye on the students that don't meet the threshold for the free and reduced lunch. I don't know if we have a process, but I... I just wanted to kind of put that on record, that we're really keeping an eye on those kids that are kind of stuck in that middle place. And 25 cents might not mean much, but over the course of a week or two or a month, it might mean a lot to some students. So I just hope we can keep our eyes open and be really aware about how students are doing. Thank you for... Thank you so much.
So I got questions on both fees. I just wanted to make sure I understand. So we talked about raising the preschool tuition incrementally. To what point are we stopping as a plan?
So this is a three-year plan, 25% over the next three years, which is kind of going to piggyback on Jackie. The reason why we wanted to break forward and incrementally increase was to allow families the time to plan. I'm also going to make mention, we do offer payment plans to families that are interested, and of course, we do utilize the free and reduced lunch program as criteria to assist with need.
So it'd be $1,300 this coming school year, and then another $1,300 the year after, and then one...
A little bit more, but 25% for the next three years to get us up to what would be below market at that point.
Which would be what?
Well, we're shooting for that $9,000 number here. But three years from now, we already know that the other districts are looking to increase their tuition fees next year as well. They could be beat out of mouth by plus.
Is there a residency requirement to be... To attend our preschool? Do you have to be an Avon resident to attend our preschool?
So, two things. One, we have to provide a preschool program to any of our students, incoming students who have been identified as having special needs. Yes, you have to reside in Avon for that, or you have to be one of our students through the choice program. Likewise, for our friends in the program, the non-disabled peers, you have to live in...
The reason I was...
For the initial piece of the lottery.
The reason I was asking, I was curious in terms of the high enrollments. Is that just because we have a high demand in this town? Or is it people from outside this community coming because we offer a better value?
So, we do have people who will put their name into a lottery from other towns, yes. We try to, and we're going through and matching with preference to the non-disabled peers that live in Avon, but we do have families from other towns on the list also.
Good, aye. My second question on the fees on lunches. I know we... There are a variety of additional items we sell besides lunches. Has there been discussion about maybe raising the fees on those optional items? I have the same conversation with my son all the time about his extra drink he orders, you know, besides the milk that comes with the lunch, to sort of address some of what Jackie's concerns were.
I thought one of the things we reviewed over the summer, and there's one rule to that, that we have to follow mandate by mistake. So we are where we should be with that. So I do think that I could raise it a little bit this year. And I really looked at our prices. We really are where we should be at that point. But I do want to say Jackie, one of your concerns, and that is a concern. Those students that fall in that maybe reduced category. And myself, my colleagues, we go to Washington and talk about it. And, you know, if we had our way, we would do away with the reduced category and have everybody in the pre-category. Although they have, over the last two years now, have the families are on the hospital program, that goes into the deciding factor. And many more families who may not have qualified for free lunch or qualified would then be in the program. So if you're doing your best to help those families.
Well, I appreciate that, and I believe that the entire team is doing their best. I just, you know, sometimes it's just worth kind of saying that we need to prioritize. There are so many kids that fall kind of in that middle area, and we've all been in those positions where every little bit counts. And I... Yeah, to Jess's point, we're talking about like lunch, not the fun stuff, the basics.
But I would feel more comfortable raising the cost on those extras than the basic nutritional lunch that we provide as the staple.
Just to repeat and be clear about what Maggie said, because she's in the audience and out here, and again, for the public record, answer to Mr. Flashman's question. We are regulated in what we can charge in some ways, particularly in these, what we call the fun or the ancillary items, because we're a public school system, so we're not allowed to make money, so to speak, a revenue off of the items more than a markup threshold for what they cost the district. And that's where we are at this point in those items, so the cost of them could not be raised, correct Maggie?
And also, the flip side of that is the lunch price, that we formula.
Right.
Where we do have to charge enough also.
Correct.
I have one more question for the tuition. I'm sorry for keep jumping back and forth. Do we have any comparisons for, for example, like the magnet schools and regional schools in the area? I know a lot of students look at, for example, the Krec school for preschool, just for comparison.
When we had built the fee schedule last year, we did poll data for what we call the non-public institutions in the area, so I do have comparable data. I can bring it forward this year and be verified in this year, but we could compile that list again.
But I was just thinking, since like, for example, Krec, right? So the Krec preschools, you know, my concern would be, while we may still be under price for surrounding towns, we want us to make sure that we attract students in Avon to start the preschool program here. And if we are where we in terms of the competition of them going out to those other schools? That's my only other question.
I could respond to that. We've seen an increase ever since we went to full-day kindergarten. When we had the half-day kindergarten, we had many more students that would go to, you know, a Krec program because it was a guarantee of a full-day kindergarten. Since we've had full-day kindergarten, we have maybe one or two students coming back from a Krec program of a preschool.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Houston?
Let me just make sure I understand. The tuition does not cover the cost of preschool, correct?
Now, last year, the total cost of preschool, I actually have it, $661,000 to run just the preschool portion of the program. So no, the tuition does not cover it. We bring in about $106,000 a year. That was not based on this increase. That was last year.
And what's the basis for which we charge tuition? It's because they're so young and it's not required as part of it? It's part of the free education?
Right. At this point in the state of Connecticut, preschool is not a requirement. It is if you are a special education student, but peer models, there is tuition that is allowable for districts to charge. Now, as far as where this tuition amount came from, to be honest, we've just been building on what was here, and I'm not sure if this board is aware. Honestly, I'm not. When I came in, it was, it was very, very low. We also had a half-day program. We also did run 180 days a year for the preschool program. So I think it was probably a combination of all of that, how that tuition was calculated back then. So we've been trying to stabilize the program at this point. They do go 180 days. They do go a full day. And now we're going to try and address this, so it's, it makes sense at this point.
No, I understand the, the argument, although I have a certain sympathy, I think, for saying that it should be included in what we do in our general taxes as a philosophical matter. But if we're used to the cash and it doesn't even cover the cost of the program, that's also another factor to consider, but thank you.
Laura?
Perhaps Ms. Heshad can clarify for us, because we had this discussion during our very detailed discussion in the finance committee, that there are other sources of revenue for the program, and perhaps you can share those beyond tuition.
So we do allocate a portion of the older choice funds, specifically the early beginnings grant. If you recall, I speak about it every year. Every year, we're not sure if we're going to get it. Again, I'm not sure this year if we're going to get it. But that's the additional $4,500 per student that the state has been granting since I've been here at least for full-day preschool and kindergarten. So that does help offset that, that portion of the program.
It's a lot for preschool, I guess. That's, but it costs a lot, I guess.
Any other questions?
Just wanted to make a couple of comments from our finance committee meeting. We also discussed the cost per day, which is on this, but with the increase, it's going from $30.92 to $38.65 a day, which is still significantly less than both Farmington and Simsbury, which are over $50 a day. And the other piece I want to share, we talked about was the importance of communication. If it passes tonight, letting the families know far in advance if they can plan if they want to participate, knowing how much it costs to change.
Are the Farmington, are the ones that we're comparing the two similar models in that they have the half and half, the peer model and the?
So yes, it has to be, because on the one hand, we, we all as public schools have to provide pre-K for disabled three and four-year-olds. By law, we also have to provide it via a peer model. So we do the best that we can to have it be balanced between disabled and non-disabled peers, and that's all public schools.
Anything else?
I'll move to approve.
Do you want to read the motion?
Motion to approve the fiscal year 2020, 2021 fees and tuition schedule as presented.
I thank Jay for reading my mind.
Yes.
I'll second you, Houston.
Okay, second to Jay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, extensions? Pass as unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, now we move to communication from Board of Education members. Laura?
So while, while we are on here attending our meeting, the Avon Planning and Zoning Board has on its agenda the potential tonight for the approval of the apartment complex to potentially be built at 64 Avon Wood Road, which would include 270 new apartments in town, and I am greatly concerned about the potential impact that this will have to Pine Grove School and to the rest of our school system at large. I think there's a very high probability that this will be approved tonight based on previous minutes and the way the board has discussed the presentation as it is given. So I just would like to go on record as expressing my concern of potential impact enrollment.
Houston?
Just sort of a brief comment, and I'm sure the administration will not be in position to respond. I'm concerned that we have raised a number of times enrichment programs for gifted, and I know that we've been assured something is coming down the pipe, so I figured that I would be proactive and ask where we are and when we might see the pipe.
Curriculum and professional practices committee, 22nd.
Excellent. Then I'll look for the 22nd of October. Excellent. All right.
I wanted to add to something that Houston said. I, my, doesn't, okay. I had a meeting, I was fortunate to have a meeting over at Thompsonbrook this week while we were putting our agenda together, and I did get to see the new maker spaces that are just being installed at Thompsonbrook. I think also, are they at all the schools at this point?
They're in various stages of implementation, but yes.
So, and I think, I know they're hoping to use it in, towards some of those concerns that, about the gifted program, but they're really, really exciting, robots and computers and artsy stuff and origami because of math. And I was, okay. So I was really excited to see that. It was, I want to go back, but it's kind of all out of the box, and then I would love to share that with people because it's a really exciting thing to see. You should go see it. It's really, it's a really neat thing.
We are looking for ways for you to be able to see this, so it wasn't just Jackie, just for the record, but we'll, we'll come back about that.
All right. Any other board members? And those of you that have stayed throughout the meeting, is there anyone who would like to offer communication from the public? All right. Thank you for staying with us this evening. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So I move.
I used to move. Do you have a second? Second by Laura. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, abstain, pass as unanimously at 8:00.